Public, MDF Public Schools. Been a little while, so first off, Michelle is not able to join tonight, so I'm standing in as chair for tonight. And Leo Brem is on Zoom, am I correct?
Yep.
So when we, if we vote, as we vote on anything, just make sure we share our names and yes. Before starting, I think we'll start with public comment. Members of the public will be welcome to comment during the public input through Zoom or here online. Please either raise your, or if you're in here, come up to the mic, or if you're remote, raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you keep your camera on if you're on Zoom, or speak into the mic if you are here. And that in either case, you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes. And, oh, and I think we have an echo.
Yeah, or this needs to be muted, maybe?
So, because, yeah, maybe we can check on that, because I'm guessing people online can't hear.
I am online, yeah. It sounds like it's up here.
Is that you?
No, this needs to be on.
Oh, that one needs to be on.
Everything else is on.
But it sounds like we're getting feedback from there.
Yeah, it's definitely coming from there, not mine, right? Uh, I'm muted now.
Okay, I knew there was something.
Yeah, you're muted.
Sure, he's still there, he's still, okay. Let's take a minute or two just to get that right if we can. Hello? So now you don't hear me, or did you mute again?
That's better, yeah.
Still picking up a little bit.
So far away.
Five years of practice, we still can't get this.
Does it normally come?
All of us.
Testing. So there is no.
I don't hear now, right?
No. I think it's good.
Okay, so let me finish this, and there's one error, but while we, I'll get it.
Thanks.
Um, I'll just finish the last thing, which I think everyone's familiar with. In either case, we ask that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes, and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. So in a minute, we'll take public input, and Andrea informed me that I forgot to take a roll call. So let's do a quick roll call. Tim Knight is here.
Will Horn here.
Diana Frashella here.
Leo Brown here.
Okay, great. So is there any public input here in the room, or is there anybody raising their hand on my end?
No. Where did I just see a hand over here?
No.
We haven't had a Zoom in like three years.
Yeah, no, they would.
Okay.
I think it would show up over here, and then you would grant them purpose, you have like ability to talk.
Okay, so the two items on the consent agenda is approval and retention of the February 13th executive session minutes, and approval of the February 13th regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, and because we're on Zoom, Tim Knight, yes?
Will Horn, yes.
Diana Frashella, yes.
Leo Brown, yes.
Okay, great. So under new business, we have the multi-tiered system of support presentation, and Dr. Marston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So really excited tonight to have Mary and Christine here to do the presentation at MTSS. They've been working really hard over a year now, working with the committee to review and go through what we're doing as a district in terms of the supports. And they've implemented this whole framework this particular year, so it's going really, really well. So they're here to kind of go over that, and give you what the process was, and some feedback on how it's going, so.
It's on, you're good on, yeah.
Yeah, you can see it. It's not on the TVs, but that's okay. Well, I guess not perfectly good.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. Mary and I are really happy to present our MTSS process, and also what is happening within the Medfield Public Schools. To start specifically is what is MTSS? And MTSS represents our comprehensive framework that enables us to develop systems to make sure that all of our students receive a high-quality education. There are three components to that, specifically data-driven decision-making, systematic progress monitoring, and implementation of evidence-based support. And our ultimate goal within this is to sustain continuous student growth, and making sure that we create the environment where the all students can do the best possible. Now, the Talkway in a corner represents the state framework on, in terms of their framework on MTSS, and we'll show you in terms of how we've adapted it to really make it Medfield-specific. So, to add a little more deeply, there are three specific areas of focus that we deal with our approach, and that focuses on academic, social-emotional, and behavioral. For academic, it's really our approach to make sure that all students receive a high-quality education, and that we identify students' needs through specific screening and other testing. We implement and we support students through tiered intervention. There are three levels of interventions, including tier one, which is universal, tier two, which is more targeted, and tier three, which is more comprehensive. Social-emotional addresses our students' ability to understand their emotions, and also about relationships and decision-making. And our schools approach this by our curricula, as well as individual supports through skill-building and other targeted supports. With behavior, that equally focuses on establishing an environment with clear expectations on students' behavior within the school, and that we support our students through specific interventions and other skill-building. Yeah, that's okay. All right. Excellent. So this is a little bit about the work that we have done in Medfield. It's been a long process. MTSS, it feels a little bit reminiscent of things that you've heard before, which is response to intervention. A lot of people kind of, when we first started this conversation, which we started back in 2019, we came around and we kind of said, this is MTSS, this is multi-tiered system of support, and everyone said, sounds like you just took RTI and put a new fancy name on it. What's the big difference? Really, the big difference is that RTI puts a lot of focus on responding, while multi-tiered systems of support is trying to look more at how can we preemptively look at the information that we have, and utilize systems around us to support all students. So instead of saying, teacher, you and your classroom, or it's on you to recognize where the student is struggling, it's on you to collect the data, it's on you to do everything, and then you bring it to us, and we tell you what to go back and do all by yourself in your classroom. It's saying, we have so much information about students, about data, about all the things that are happening. It's really on all of us to be looking at those and building the systems to support that. So that was kind of our big spiel back in 2019, and we set up a committee, we were really excited, and we got started in February of 2020, and we stopped very quickly in March of 2020. Yes. So other things kind of came in the way for a little bit there, and we restarted with two different committees in 2021. One was wholly focused on intervention and outlining what interventions existed within the district, both tier one, tier two, and tier three, and trying to align and say, what is available? We don't even necessarily know all of the things that we are doing within the district. So we worked through with a wonderful group of people that kind of tailored through what exactly is available, and how it's available, and gave definitions and non-examples, and everything of a lot of the interventions that we were working on. The MTSS group then kind of did a self-assessment to see where we are. At the end of that year, we realized it would be great to bring the two groups together now to merge what we've been doing. So since 2022, for the 22, 23, and 23, 24 school year, the committee came together. These are kind of a wide variety of the things that they did, and they said they did do a full battery of what the intervention's available. They looked and completed an MTSS self-assessment for the district. They also looked, Christine said, that's the definition for MTSS, kind of the greater definition, it's in the blueprint for DESI. They looked and said, what does it mean in Medfield? It's all great for us to take these fancy words and all of these things, what does it truly mean in Medfield to support all students? And came up with the definition that it's a systematic, evidence-based framework that provides a continuum of supports for all students to meet their educational needs. And then they looked at that lovely graphic, which again was that kind of schoolhouse that Christine pointed to, which really is the same triangle from RTI that they made look like a schoolhouse, and put some of the same words in. And they wanted to reflect more of what it looks like in Medfield. And so here you can kind of see the graphic for what they developed. And the big piece that they wanted to know is that there's overlap, and there's kind of constant movement amongst the circles. Students are at the center of it, and around that is the evidence-based supports, equity, systematic, and comprehensive kind of looking at supports. But more importantly, what we really needed to focus on was the family, community, and school connection as well, to highlight how that was going to support our MTSS framework. They then hashed out, as I said, nuances between intensive, targeted, and universal supports. They reviewed all of the different drivers, which are part of the DESI kind of blueprint, and what it would mean within the district. They designed this logo. They looked at our SST flowchart across elementary and secondary, and really tried to hone in on what are we doing with SST, how are we supporting teachers so that they are not trying to come? Sometimes it felt like in order to bring a student to SST, you had to do eons and eons of work in order to bring somebody to that student support team. And now, how can we make it so that it's streamlined, it's consistent, and it feels the same across all of the district? And it's mirroring what we look at for MTSS. And then they developed a thorough list of all of our data streams. And this probably was one of the biggest parts of what they were doing. So this was part of the intervention. This is not a wholly comprehensive list, but this is just to give you an understanding of what they were kind of looking at. As Christine said, that tier one is the core universal, so what we felt was important. Name it around. So what we felt was important is that the state one has the academic, the major, and social-emotional. It does not include that family engagement piece, so we did one locally at the family engagement piece, and made sure that we were highlighting that within the district as well. So at the tier one, there's meeting with teachers, open house, parent-teacher conferences, newsletters, family webinars, school activities, volunteer opportunities. Tier two, weekly check-ins, Google Docs, parent training. Then at tier three, Medfield outreach, SST process. You can kind of go through each thing that we did to highlight some of the available opportunities across the district. As I said, if you saw the full list, it would not fit into a triangle that fit into any kind of a slide, so it is not a comprehensive list, but we wanted you to kind of understand some of the ways that we were looking at the different areas and with different tiers and interventions. From there, and I'll show you on the, let me actually show this next slide. This is like a small amount of the data stream sources that the district highlighted. And I mean like a very small amount of what they were looking through. We have so much data available, and we were trying to highlight and look at ways to say, how are we going to look at all of this data in a meaningful way across the district? So this is what the team came together for. They decided at the, each building, we have an MTSS coordinator. So for Memorial, it's Katie Arias. For Reluck, it's Katie, oh, sorry, it's Caitlin Waters. For Dale Street, it's Cam Tobin. For Blake, it's Michael Dow. And for the high school, it is Ann Lodge. All of these teams are working with the building administration to bring together every month. We work with the administration ahead of time to highlight data sources that will be analyzed for patterns, for concerns, and we walk through exactly what we're going to kind of have a conversation about. The chair and the building team work together. They look for those themes, they look for those concerns, they look for those outliers and patterns, and they try to create action plans. Those action plans are then held on a tab that is called our active tab. At the beginning of every meeting, they go back onto the active tab to look at, what are those action plans that we have? How are things moving? Are we seeing progress? Are we seeing what we had expected through the action plan? Do we continue this action plan? Do we change the action plan? So they're doing that each month, looking at things like school attendance, looking at nurse visits, looking at the length of time that those nurse visits are, how many times they're visiting guidance, what do these guidance calls look like for behavioral support at the elementary level? They are looking through that, and then bringing those themes to the district leadership team, with all of the administration. Because as I said, again, one of the big pieces is not just saying, what are you doing to fix it at your classroom level, at your building level, but what are the systems doing at large? So then at the larger meetings, at our leadership meetings, we're having conversations about what trends are we seeing across the district? What fiscally should we be funding? What should we be looking at for professional development? What should we be looking at for training, for support, for staffing, for prioritization across the district? Then from there, at our leadership meeting for central office, which is with Dr. Marston, Michael, Christine, and myself, we then look through that and say, what can we prioritize? How can we function this? How can we support that department build and create to support the trends that we're seeing to support all students? This is, as I said, what the data sheet looks like. So as I said, each week, or each month, they are looking at one specific data source, which is highlighted. Then we go through the names. We go through exactly whether it's a group trend that we're recognizing, or an individual trend. Because one thing that we're often seeing is that we're looking for students that have trouble. We might see across a grade level, an entire, you know, pocket of children are having trouble, and we should be targeting that support before we're finding more of them. So if we're recognizing that, you know, after D-period at the, at the middle school, you know, we are having students arrive to class a little bit later, well, what's happening in the hallways of D-period? What can we do to support those students? If more students are going to the nurse at specific times, and we're recognizing across the board in one building that that nurse time is busy, what's happening at that time that we could support, that we could potentially go get socially-emotional, so that we're building those things in? So sometimes it might be an individual student that they're looking at and developing an action plan. Sometimes it might be groups of students that they're looking at and highlighting that. So each month, they're tracking on here, and then as you can see, there's an active tab at the bottom. The active tab is reviewed every single time, but then we also keep track of the inactive tab. And the inactive tab is just so that if a student kind of who's made, or the group has made the progress that we expected, we still want to track that and keep, you know, so if something pops up again, we can say, hey, I think they're already on our inactive. Let's look what the last thing was, what we did, how we supported it, and try to make sure that we're listing them out.
Ask one question before we go into next steps.
Absolutely.
Freshen. To make sure I understand it too. So is like the tier on the left, is that effectively whatever, call it incident intervention? Is it almost like saying, it's classified as a tier is one, two, or three? Like when you're looking at this.
At the data sheet?
Yeah, like this.
No tiers on this one?
At the triangle, though, like.
Oh, the triangle?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just, I was more trying to understand how that tier.
So the tiers really are, it's core, there is, if you look at.
You may have explained it, like.
So if you look at this, tier one is core. So that is really, it's universally available for everyone, right? But we might say, hey, you know what, we're recognizing that this student, every day after lunch, is going into the nurse's office and is spending, you know, 10 minutes in the nurse's office. Maybe we should be checking in to find out what it is that's happening during that, or during this period it's happening. Or they're going into the bathroom, you know, every single day for five minutes. Maybe, maybe it's that they have a need to go to the bathroom at that time. Maybe it's that something is feeling uncomfortable, and we can build in a guidance group, we can build in check-ins. We can look at things that might be that tier two level of support, where we say, hey, maybe they need a little bit more intervention support from reading and math, because we're looking at all of our universal screener data, and that might be a recommendation. So every time we give a reading screener or math screener, we also come together as a team. We're really fortunate right now, where we are able to come together and look at it. We have specific kind of criteria, that if we hit those criteria, you're going to go immediately a recommendation for a special education eval. Other criteria, we're going to say, this is, you know, a clear student that's going to be picked up for intervention. Other students, we can say, this is a student that we're going to build in a boot camp of intervention for, we're going to move forward, or we're going to, you know, just kind of make sure that the classroom teacher is checking in on this kind of level of area. So that's another aspect that we're looking through, and then making recommendations as to what tier of support might be recommended, and then following through on those action plans, to make sure.
Okay. I think, I think, so in the way, I like the example. Like some of the data that you may collecting, you see trend.
Absolutely.
That elevates, and then you start saying, you do high level, is it tier one, tier two, tier three?
Exactly. What's the least restrictive way that we What's the least restrictive way that we can support this? But what is the way that we can make sure that that student, that group of students, that grade level, that, you know, whichever, is receiving what they may need in order to be successful across all areas?
And do you feel like, because this is only as good as the data that gets collected, obviously, so from like a perspective of the teachers and the aides who are in the school, right, to say like, you know, Josie goes to the bathroom every day during science class, right? And leaves for 20 minutes? Like that would require though, like, the person who's noticing it? Or is that like, or when you did the nurse example, is a nurse sort of tracking?
Nurse checks in every single time someone's.
The nurse, yes, so I assume the nurse does, but.
Classrooms have their own systems of recording when a student leaves.
Leaves and is coming back.
So, you know, yes, it is, but typically every classroom has some, especially at the elementary level, which is more.
Right. Yes, but that's how the, and then those teachers sort of bubble it up.
Secondary level is a little bit easier because they're, they're really tracked through where they are and where attendance is for every single period. So it's a little bit more recognizable. But at the elementary level, each class is really good about having kind of their own system.
Yes.
Of ways that they're doing that. So what we're trying to do is not create more things for people to do.
Right.
But rather use a lot of the information that we know and we have and we see to help kind of benefit the.
Yep. So it's like data we already had, but in a way to pull it together is the goal.
And I think that's, you know, for the students, you know, we said sometimes if it's a student that has, you know, behaviors in the elementary level, they have one behavior in September, no one's really drawing any attention to that. They have two in October, again, you know, might not stand out. November, they have three. Again, probably a little bit more people are starting to pick up. By January, they're having multiple behaviors and it's a pretty significant thing. And we're bringing someone in and saying, you know, we need some support, here's our BCA, let's have a conversation. If we had recognized that it went from one to two to three to four earlier, we can intervene earlier.
Yep.
And we can start to say, hey, this is actually what we want to step in on. We want to make sure like what is causing this behavior? Let's get more information. Let's get some support in before we get to a point where, where the choice is kind of, that the behavior is more ingrained or that is their escape from something. If we could teach more meaningful communication in a way, we could sometimes intervene in the early.
Yep. And then from a, like the tier one, tier two, tier three, if a student, you know, if it's more like, I know we have generalized trends, but it could be a student specifically. At that point, you also bring the parents in or guardian to let them know? Or do you start with like, if it could be an intervention that you are just handling? Or do you always notify the parent that like, this is being put in place almost like stuff on tier two, so they know?
Anytime we're moving into really tier two, you know, if a guidance counselor's checking in, a student, a parent would be aware. Any kind of intervention, reading math, there are letters that go home that we state like what the recommendations were. Sometimes it might just be like, hey, the classroom teacher is going to be held in that hallway for that, that time. You wouldn't necessarily call the parents to say, you know, sometimes we're noticing a group of students is not in the hallway where they're supposed to be, so how a staff person there making sure and checking. So it can, it depends on the level of intervention.
Yep.
If it's really targeted towards one student, that would be something.
Yep.
Is it safe to say anything to or above parents who are involved?
Yep. Yeah. That's my question.
Like anytime, if a kid gets elevated to like SST stuff, are parents notified right away?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Classroom teacher reaches out directly, let them know that they're being brought to SST, and then we typically put them, you know, up front of every step of the way that the intervention is put into play, and then tracking the data to ensure.
And then SST stands for?
Student Support Team.
Tiers, okay.
So it's like, it was on the top left, but it's like, it's like a teacher has a concern.
Yes, I just wasn't sure what that, we were using that acronym, if that makes sense.
So each building has their own student support team.
Yep.
And it is the principal plus, you know, a variety of other members. And again, that is typically involving, you know, if it's a reading concern, we might have a reading intervention, it's at the SST team, we might have, you know, a math person, if it's social, emotional, we'll try to have a counselor there. And they're looking at things that have already kind of taken place. If a student is struggling in this area, I did X, Y and Z, this is the data I collected. And then it's a collection of educators and professionals that can have conversations about what, what could be done next. They usually give an exact intervention to try and then have them map with more data to show whether that intervention, that action plan was working or not. So it's definitely a, something that's wonderful for when you are recognizing it, but I think the hope with MTSS is to preemptively hopefully recognize more of those. So the burden's not on the teacher and we're not waning to that student's struggle.
I think one of the challenges with the rollout with this, when we started it, was differentiating between SST and this, right? That people were getting confused and saying, isn't it just SST? Isn't what we're doing? And then just having that person, that lead person that Mary had talked about in every building to coordinate that, differentiated that so folks know it was, it was different, it wasn't the same.
And just admit, is Medfield Outreach, it's shown in a couple places, is that like a resource that might be supporting?
Resource that we often give for social, emotional, family engagement, you know, a lot of different supports, social and family is in, you know, resources, a pretty wonderful resource that we have in town. So it does, it is up there sometimes because they offer a lot now. So it's been an incredible five years and see all those little pieces that have all worked together to now come together, this has been pretty exciting. So where we are with next step is really reflecting upon our process thus far, looking at what's working and what can be tweaked, and really looking at that team process. We're also looking at our data systems, and as Mary said, this is not about expanding the data that we necessarily collect, but using them smarter. So really looking at the data, seeing where it's housed, seeing in terms of how it's shared, and making it more consumable. I've been doing a lot of those different pieces and really matching the questions. What are people asking? What are they seeing? And whether or not we can provide the data in a way that really can provide those answers. In most cases, we do have the data, just making sure that we get that to the team itself. And so we're, we're looking at that. The third piece is really important, is that professional learning and curriculum. Really looking at all those different pieces, seeing the trends and then being adapted to that. There are teachers, we're providing them support. For instance, in the fall, we provided trauma-informed instruction for elementary teachers, and looking at ways that PD and other curriculum that we do use to support the larger trends that we're seeing. And then of course, to expand the communication and collaboration both within district. This has been a great experience because we've been working across the district, across the building, we've been building those relationships, but also looking at outward in terms of how could we work better and more collaborative with the families and the community itself.
So, and I think I can answer that question. So it seems like, to me, it's not like the, you hit a certain point and we say, now we're rolling it out. This is more an evolution, whereas this, this is, you know, where we are, but the journey is moving.
Absolutely. And I think, yeah, and I think a lot of, a lot of what was, what was nice to see, and I think people felt good, was that a lot of the pieces of MTSS were there. We're offering some different ways for intervention. We are looking at the whole student, we are trying to focus on that. One part that we did find consistently done was this data streaming and looking and making sure that it was consistent across the district, and then how will we be bringing those methods back to the leadership team to prioritize next steps in professional learning and fiscal allocations and staffing? So I think that piece of things was a big part of what they wanted to focus on, and I think also that, that definition and that graphic and just showing that, you know, this is more than just, you know, looking at a triangle and saying, we, we put our triangle in there and we're, we're done. It is really this kind of consistent evolution that will build on this. So this year, the big piece that rolled out was that data collection, or data analysis and teams coming together. So we'll continue to build on that, and we're excited about where it's going.
Sounds great.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So next up is the disposal of outdated curriculum materials.
So in your materials, you have a list that Christine put together of all the materials that are now considered outdated, that we need to dispose of, and it's Bay State books? That's what's got? And we'll be donating to Bay State books, they'll come and pick that up for us and then they'll distribute that. But we all, we need your approval before we do any of that, is, is that surplus to get rid of. So I ask that you approve the request as, in your, as written in your materials.
Does that mean? Just a second. It depends if there's a vote, I was going to ask if there's a, is this something?
The vote required.
Yeah, so this is, a vote is required. Generally speaking, we, we do allow public comment if there's something, you know, substantive. And so I'm, I'm okay. First, first off, I'll, I'll call that, just any comments or questions from the committee?
On this? Nope.
Okay, all right. Yes, if there's any public comment on this specific item, feel free to come up.
I think Judge H. Juniper, Lane in Medfield, outdated curriculum materials. We have a concern with the third grade, third grade tours being canceled because it was considered outdated curriculum. So is, are the third grade tours on this list?
So I think that generally speaking, we take public comment at the beginning of the meeting for items that are on the agenda. As I understand it, this topic is outdated curriculum materials that we actually dispose of.
Correct.
So, no, I don't, I don't think we're, that's an item on the agenda.
We don't have field trips on here.
On the list.
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah. And we do take public comment on any item at the beginning of meetings. So in a, in a future meeting, if there's public comment on other items, we're.
Thank you.
Okay. So is, let me just, so is there a motion to dispose of the outdated curriculum materials or in our packet?
Yes.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Great. So all in favor?
We have a separate name. Will Horn, aye.
Diana Frashella, aye.
Tim Knight, aye. Leo Brem, yes, and Tim Knight, yes. Okay. Thank you. So, I want to just focus on this as I get it agreed. Okay. So next up is superintendent's contract extension. I'll, I'll speak to that. So during the executive sessions over the last several months, we've been discussing an extension of Dr. Morrison's contract while working with Dr. Morrison outside of executive sessions to review and, and try to get an agreement. I'm happy to report to the public, I think the folks on the committee know, that we did just vote on that in executive session before the meeting. We voted to approve the terms. Members of the committee have those terms in our packet. What we want to do right now is vote on that, those terms in public, and those terms will be included in the public packet afterwards. Some may ask the reason they're not in the packet beforehand is in case we didn't come to an agreement earlier.
Yep.
So first off, I guess, I, any other conversation we just, we did, from our group? Okay, great. Is there any public comment on this topic?
Yes, hi, Chris Mott, Southern Percy. So I would like you to, best practice after, as I can session when you agree on terms, is actually making those terms public. So my question is, when did the contract expire? What is the base salary for each year? What is the longevity bonus for each year? And what is the annual contribution to the retirement?
Thank you for your input.
Well, you can answer maybe because it's on the agenda.
No, I appreciate the input. We're going, we, we take your public input, and I think everything that was just shared is, is, is just like any of our, any other superintendent in the state, that's public information, so.
That's not how it works. The contract, we're supposed to watch the outcome of that contract. Because it's actually, so let me actually make another point, in that here we are just weeks before a contested school committee election. I also think, I think it's bad form to put forth the superintendent contract extension that wasn't supposed to expire until 2027. So in, in these tight financial times in the town, where school committees have been asked to cut additional dollars from money, you owe the community an explanation as what amount of money, and this should be public, right now, tonight, what the amount of money has been allocated for the contract. There are a number of reasons why this vote should have been postponed after the election. A little sensitivity, public scrutiny, and also the final link, most of all the financial implications. So it does, it's not a good feeling when you have a vote taken place with no details before a school committee contested election for a contract that wasn't supposed to expire for two more years.
I appreciate your input.
So what's the rationale for doing it two years early?
This, this is public comment, you're welcome to share your comments, and we appreciate that.
Feel no obligation to actually answer the questions?
No. What I would say is we have been through a lengthy process on our part, a process that I, as somebody who's been very active and very comfortable with, we are following processes that are consistent with how we've done it in the past, very comfortable with where we stand. So I definitely appreciate your input and with that.
The processes in the past have been, the terms have actually been provided at the meetings. Chris Morrison did that.
Okay, so I appreciate your time. Do you have any other comments?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment, either online or?
Yeah, there sure is. Dick Judge, H. Juniper, after hearing that exchange and the, and the democratic process of, I understand you go behind closed doors for executive session to discuss these delicate issues, but the decision has been made? Is that correct? Can, you, all right, they just mentioned that the decision was made, correct?
What we're trying to do right now, this is, this is, it's in our agenda. Yes.
And I'm speaking to it.
Why we went into executive session.
Yep.
And why we've gone into executive session over the last several months is, it's, it's in the agenda. There's reasons why, and there are certain areas that are sensitive. We don't go through every nuance of individuals.
I'm, I'm not asking for nuances, I'm asking for what you voted on this evening in executive session, which is to be made public immediately after executive session is over.
I'm, I'm processing what you're, what you are saying. What we voted on in executive session, the terms of the agreement.
Funny, I feel like people laughing during this when it's like a.
I'm not laughing.
So, so now I'm.
But laughing is.
I'm not laughing. When the public.
I wasn't talking to you. I'm just saying it's, but it's, but it's, but I wouldn't laugh.
Can I have an order in this room, please? I'd, I'd rather, we, we do take public input, we ask one at a time to come up, we appreciate the input, we may have conversation amongst our group to take a vote. So before we, we wind up with conversations going in three and four places, I want to make sure we're, we're consistent. So I think, Diana, you had said something that.
I, I have.
I just feel like it's disrespectful when people in the audience are making faces and laughing when there's like a conversation going on. So I was just calling that out because it was distracting to myself sitting up here.
It's interesting because I have the floor as far as the public comment is concerned right now, and everyone else seems to have commented except myself. So I'm.
So please, carry on. Generally speaking, our public input is three minutes.
Yep.
So at, at a certain point, at a certain.
Point of order.
While you had the floor, there were questions asked to us.
Point of order, I've had the, the floor for.
This committee should not respond to the public input directly. It should be that case. Let this man have his men's place to get his point across, and then we take that input.
All right, I'll start with who's speaking.
Leo Brem.
And what position do you hold?
Leo Brem is a member of the school committee. I'm sorry, he is not here.
I've been at the school committee for seven years.
Okay. So we have some terms that have been agreed upon, we have some finances that have been agreed upon, in, out of the public view, which is normal for contract negotiations. But now we have a refusal for the, the, are you the chair, Tim? For the chair to divulge the, the contract negotiations. So we have some terms that have been agreed upon, we have some finances that have been agreed upon, in, out, out of the public view, which is normal for contract negotiations. But now we have a refusal for the, 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 are you the chair, Tim? For the chair to divulge the, the, the contract negotiations to the public, who is very interested to hear what the numbers are. I'm very interested, because I all of a sudden have third grade tours canceled, and the cost was brought up. But yet in the same, in the same breath, we're having extensions of hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I just want to make sure the public is aware, and this goes on public record, that it's disappointing that the school committee could not divulge the contract negotiated agreement that you just, just agreed to vote. You're gonna make it public after the vote?
And put the documents on the, on the website like we always do.
So immediately?
Right, I, I was, I was gonna let you finish, no, I just.
That'd be, that'd be great. When will the public actually see them?
So are you done with your public comment?
I, I am, unless there's a rebuttal.
Generally speaking, this is not how we handle public voting.
Okay, so this is a public meeting, we're in a public building, and the public is allowed to participate, the last I knew. So I would appreciate, and not being confrontational, that those numbers be disclosed as soon as possible, so the public understands what you voted for. Makes sense, right? We're just asking for it. So I appreciate it, if those numbers can be divulged, ASAP, thank you.
And I'll, I'll share that, which is consistent with our conversation. The expectation is the terms that we all reviewed will be shared with the public. It's, and I think that would be as soon as tomorrow, is the statement. So, so, you know, for that comment, it will, it will be shared. Is there any other public comment? Either on the, is there anything online?
I don't see any hands or any questions.
So, and is there any other? With that, is there a motion to, and, and just a, a point of, procedurally, what would happen is, we vote to approve, and then each one of us signs the, the extension agenda. So is there a motion to approve the extension agenda as, that is consistent with what was in our packet?
A motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Oh, Diana Frashella, aye.
Will Horn, yes.
Leo Brem, yes.
Tim Knight, yes. Okay. Is there any other items since posting? So going to old business, FY '26 budget update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you know, that we are required by the warrant committee, we had, you folks had voted a 4.17 budget, and the warrant committee wants us down to 3.5. So Mike and I have been working on a leadership team and trying to get some, some reductions to bring to you at the next meeting. Our goal is to bring you about $500,000 worth of, worth of reductions, so that you can take a look at it, and then go through the list and decide which ones that you think, in what direction you want to go on some of the reductions. So we're, we're looking at all programs, all supplies, everything, we're going through all of that, and we'll have a list for you at the next meeting, but certainly not easy to get down to that number. You know, one of the things that we talked about, Michelle and I talked about last week, is, do we look at pausing the free kindergarten tuition as an option? I think that's something that we feel strongly about not doing, but that could also be a consideration, because if we took that part out of it, we'd be just about, it would be more than we wanted us to do. So we'll give you a whole menu of things to look at at the next meeting, and then we'll go through that line by line and decide exactly where you want to make that reduction. But, you know, we are, we are required to read that 3.5 based on the warrant committee's recommendation, as it's gonna be in the warrant town meeting, so. That's kind of where we are.
And just, and so you.
Dr. Mo.
Go ahead, well, early up.
Sorry, sorry, this is nothing, I can't stand it. The, do, do we have a number of how much federal funds we have from IDEA and Circuit Breaker set aside as well, in the event that that is, so hoping we need to take into consideration later this year?
Yes, we have Circuit Breaker carryover from last year, which is not even close to what we should be carrying over, but it's a little bit lower. And then our IDEA stuff, I don't think we're gonna have any, any carryover that will go into August 31st, I think we'll be spending all that down. So, I mean, everything I've read so far says that the federal funding to K-12 schools will not be cut. So, kind of going with that right now, I mean, I know that the Department of Ed is being cut, positions are being cut, but they're, the federal government at this point is holding K-12 federal grants harmless to all of these reductions, so, I mean, it could change tomorrow, but we'll see how that goes.
I ask the question for the purposes, obviously, for folks to understand the other, other pieces at play here, and the considerations to take as well. Thank you for your reference on the budget.
Darren, I just, so when you say you'll have the, the list of potentials, so the gap is 670?
No, the gap is 310. Yeah, the gap is 310, and we'll have up to 500,000 to kind of look at.
To pick and choose to get the 310.
Yeah.
To see, to get it down to that number.
Okay, yeah, that's not ideal, but that's what it is. Okay, thank you. Next is policy review for ACAB, and I don't know if there's any.
There's no changes on that, nothing has changed, so.
Yeah, so that, and that, I think those are consistent with what was in the packet, and consistent with what it was a few years ago. So this is the second reading, and I think after, if there's no questions or comments, we could bring that to a vote.
Yeah.
So if there's any, well, this is a, you know, it is, is there any public comment on Metfield Policy ACAB? In the room or online?
No hands or no questions in the chat thing?
Is there a motion to accept Metfield Policy ACAB as it was shared in my packet?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Diana Frashella, aye.
Will Horn, yes.
Leo Brem, yes.
And Tim Knight, yes. Next up is the mobile phones, social media task force update.
Sure. Sure, so we had a meeting just this week on Monday. Owen was there, head of technology, and people were interested in things like the firewall and how the network works, and he got us through a lot of that stuff. There were some like technical questions and how different sites are blocked. What's, is it Lightstream, is that the second company? So we have, we have a firewall, and then a kind of a second firewall, so people were interested in that, and how websites are categorized, and so we went through some of that stuff, so that was super informative. And then the, the group is up to, I think we're up to six students, so Holly and I asked them questions, just on like how they think our current policies are in the middle school, in the high school, for the high school students, how has it changed since we have, you know, these, these lockers? And the kids, you know, generally the feedback, the students on the committee seem okay with like us helping them not have phones in their hands all the time, which was, which is a positive thing, to see the changes. Especially the high school students, right, who lived with it, and now they're, now they, a lot of, they said, because of the policy we created, the teachers, it is more consistent, and they are, they're learning to live without their phone in class, and they are happy to do that. There is comments such as, you know, kids noticed that teachers are doing less classroom management and phone police, which is a good thing for our classrooms. So that was some of the takeaways from the kids. And then we started our breakout groups, so the four categories were like curriculum, parent education, community norms, and the handbook and policies. So we just broke up into those groups, and we were trying to come up with short-term and long-term goals. Short-term being like, what can we get done, or what education do we want in those areas by the end of the year? Like the, by June, because we only have a couple of meetings left, frankly. And then long-term goals are like, what would we like, what would we like our maybe community norms to look like in, you know, a year or two years? And what parent education and support can we, what programs can we do, or what ideas do we have to help educate our parents on the, on cellphones? Or frankly, I'll say the dangers of cellphones, but I don't know if I'm supposed to. But, um, yeah, so that's where we're at. So we just broke into our groups, and we, you know, it's crazy, because we only meet months, once a month, but so we have like three meetings left. We were working those groups to figure out what we can do to help our young people, you know, live in a world of technology. I should mention, so I, I, I mean, I'm showing my bias here, but, you know, some of this stuff, we're talking about AI and positive things too. I, I wanted to be on the committee, because a lot of this stuff scares me a lot. I, I know there are good things, but that's just, you know, whatever, just to speak to my, my biases, I'm giving my speech there, but, but.
That's pretty much it, I think.
It's a great update. I, I, again, it's good, most of what your update was very similar to mine, you know, so the couple of things, one, I thought Owen, it was fascinating to learn a little more about how, how things are done here. I, I think more important, the group found that to be amazing. The students, I think, were the stars of the show, so to speak. We had middle schoolers and high schoolers. The maturity I thought was, was exceptional. And they, you know, it was, it was a good, open conversation, you know, with a couple of the other comments I had, you know, what's distracting if they do see or hear notifications, you know, which they would know about. Talked a little bit about betterment for the policy, and something that we've talked about as well, maybe for freshmen not having them during flex or, or certain periods of the day. A few of them, I guess, in the middle school, the term they use is off in a way. And they, nobody in the middle school has any problem with off in a way. There's a difference between a off and on. You know, so, so I thought that, that was a, it was good to hear that term, and I do, you know, wonder if, think about is off in a way a horrible thing across the board at some point for freshman? They, it was really impressive, the students, they talk about almost like the controls they made a choice to put in place to prevent them from being on certain areas for, say, more than 10 minutes. And they, they, it was, it was very genuine. And I also, you know, they kind of said it was due, this was my note anyways, phones help or hurt relationships in school, you know, unanimous, all of them said, they heard them. You know, they said, hey, in lunch, if everyone's on the phone, that's not enjoyable at all. And I, I thought of it, we're all like, when you think about community norms, like you're all in a restaurant, and you see people on a phone. It was nice to hear that from, from our kids. So, you know, I, I agree, I, I thought it was great, I think the breakouts, I'm, I'm excited about ours, you're on, anything?
Community norms.
Yeah, I'm with parent and student education. And the one, the one thing I think, just for us as a, a school committee, that short-term girls could be recommendations for next year, for the administration, right? Like, hey, we recommend at least A and B, and it, it would be great if short-term and we implemented something, but it kind of keeps us, I don't know, that's a good suggestion, keeps us, keeps us going. And, and then, you know, I also was really happy that they are thinking about this as a longer-term, a longer-term group.
We spoke afterwards that I think one of the parent and education pieces really needs to be having our kids on a panel, answering questions that parents have. So that was so powerful, that meeting, when some parents, because we gave the kids questions ahead of time, but then parents followed up with questions that they were expecting, and the kids did wonderful. And it was really clear to us that parents really want this knowledge, they want it from a kid's point of view. If we can do one of those nights or a session where we have just a panel of kids doing that, it'll be really powerful for our parents to do. I mean, I think our kids are great, as you already said, and, you know, they know the ins and outs, they know the workarounds, and they will tell you exactly, you know, how they do it, and what, what not to do. I mean, one, one member of the committee said, what should I tell my, my child? You know, my child's X years old, what should I tell my child about when to get a cell phone, what to do with a cell phone, being in social media? I think it'd be really powerful if our kids did that.
Yeah, I mean, that was, it was well done, like it just became authentic, very authentic when they were out there. So it was, you know, that, that, that was good, and the committee's making progress, I agree with you, like, it's hard, because you only get together once a month, there's a lot of earth to move, but it's also, I think we're going about it the right way. Michelle is not here.
And I was not at that meeting, so.
Metfield School Building Committee update. Leah, were you in the meeting of the most recent?
I was, I was unfortunately revoked without one as well, but, well, trial season, because my wife has taken over, but it ended today, unfortunately. So the team was discussing a lot of marketing options or awareness options and community outreach as well, and is preparing for the process that we will undertake. The process we will undertake to hire an OPM, and then what's involved with the MSBA designer selection process as well. So we're just gearing up to kick that off, I believe we've been invited to the April meeting, is that correct, Jeff?
I'm not sure of that, I have to check that.
I, I thought, I thought it was around the April designer selection meeting, so, not just that, OPM meeting, the intro.
I would say that. Sorry, we're working on the educational questionnaire right now from MSBA that's due in May, we're hoping to have that done for the April 2nd meeting, so that the SBC can review that. So that was some of the homework, and then the maintenance piece was the other one, but they haven't opened up the website for us until our, until April 1st for the maintenance piece, but we'll have the other questionnaire also, educational questionnaire.
Right, and this is part of work, so it'll be, you know, ahead of schedule as quickly as possible, because we have done a lot of this work, obviously, in the past. So that has been the conversation that we've been having.
High level, is, what's the timeframe on the OPM, trying to hire?
Sometimes how quickly we get our RFS approved by our person, and then it can be anywhere from a, you know, three or four week process after that. Hopefully by the summer, I would say, Jeff, do you agree about that?
Yes, I would.
Any other comments there? Thank you.
I'd say the last, one last thing that was discussed was the amount of money to be put forward, just to check the, on the, the warrant for town meeting.
Yeah, you, you, and that's for additional funding?
Great.
Alright, cool. Community engagement and communication, there, I think we're continuing to do, you know, what, some of the work we have been doing, and whether it's going to the respective PTO meetings or different areas. But I, I don't have anything really, you know, new or different, I don't know if anyone else does. Informational items. I'm sorry.
Public comment on the communication agenda.
No, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, this is a great question to come up. Generally, we do, and this is, it's not the most obvious, it's all in this minute, we take public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Correct.
And what we, what we do is, we take public comment on any topic, but we will carve out items that are, we're voting on. So we take it once at the beginning, and then if we're voting on something, we take it, we take comment, public comment for that. Other than that, it, we, we want it to be consistent, that public comment is at the beginning of the meeting, and that's it.
Right.
You want it one-on-one with any one of the, with me anyways, after the meeting.
No, that, that, that's fine, but I prefer to speak in public, because it's the public.
Right now, just as a, as a matter, we, we do not take public comment in the middle of the meeting, so I, I, we are eager to hear, but I don't want to start changing our.
Okay, it's regarding communication and the school committee communication.
I appreciate it, we're not voting on it, so we do not take public comment, so if you, if you, please, this is not an open, it is not a time for public comment.
I understand, and I, I respect you as the chair, and would hope that you do improve the public communication and comments, because the third grade tour was a big surprise to the public.
So right now, sir, please, this is not public comment, so if we want to speak offline after the meeting, I'm glad to.
Thank you.
Informational items.
I have a couple of things. So we're, we're really excited, we have three state championship games this weekend, so Saturday, our girls' basketball team plays at the Songus Arena at 4:00. our girls' basketball team plays at the Songus Arena at 4:00, and then our boys and girls' hockey team, back-to-back at the Garden, 5:30 and 7:30. So a lot of excitement in the high school, our kids have done a wonderful job, they've been on great runs, so we're really excited for our kids, and hopefully positive outcomes.
That's awesome, they played the Garden, I didn't realize that.
That's on.
Sunday is like 5:30 and 7:30.
Well, Sunday, back-to-back.
So exciting for those kids.
Great for those kids.
May there be anything going on? We always try to at least hear from one of our students.
Yeah, there's actually a lot of updates recently, like obviously the state championship we're excited for, and there's also kids on the music trip right now in Orlando, I think they have a competition down there. And then Deco States, like, I think a handful of people made it to internationals, which will be in April, and then spring sports trans next week, and then we also have kindness week next week, so right now we're working on writing like individual compliments to every single person in the school and every staff member, which is like a fun day, give out all the compliments, and then last update is we have semi in two weeks, so exciting things.
Where is the semi, is it?
In the gym.
Okay, that's here. I didn't know.
That's great. Thank you, it's a good update. Future agenda items, right now, actually that'll be interesting, is graduation requirements and competency determination. I look, I think the March 27th right now is.
Yes.
So it'll probably be April 10th. Okay, and anything else on future agenda that we could? Otherwise, next meeting is March 27, 2025, and I forget, we do, it's been a little while, do we typically, do you take a motion to close?
Yes.
Another roll call.
Yes, is there a motion to close out the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good. Owen, favorite, Tim Knight, yes.
Will Horn, yes.
Diana Frashella, yes.
Leo Brem, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.